We have a quorum, so we'll call this meeting to order. First thing on the, ah, something like that. I think it's a quorum. Looks like a quorum. First item on the agenda is a review of the Castle Hills Public Improvement District Agenda Items. So I'll leave that over to our City Manager.
There were so many items on this agenda related to Castle Hills that I thought it might be best to kind of walk through the overall structure of what we're doing to give you that perspective. So, just to give you some historical information, you have now seven PIDs. You passed your first PID in 1996, and now we're in the process of establishing five, six, and seven PIDs. Obviously, they produce or they provide the financing structure for the drainage, water, sewer, and the streets. And just to remind you, just so you know why you have all these steps on the agenda tonight, the state law specifies all the steps that have to be done in relation to the creation of the PIDs. So you start with the petition for establishment, and I'm not going to read all these to you, but you go through the list, and you get down to number seven where you're calling a public hearing to review the service and the assessment plan and the role. And then what you're doing today, you're conducting the public hearing on the service and assessment plans, and then you're going on and adopting an ordinance to approve the service assessment plan. So, we've gone through a lot of steps already related to the PIDs on tonight's agenda. If you remember, that public hearing had to be continued numerous times because of the Attorney General and some of the issues that they were reviewing. So, any questions on the PID creation? So, an item on your agenda tonight for PID 1C and PID 1G is the Service and Assessment Plan. And the Service and Assessment Plan is really the plan on how they're going to pay for the infrastructure. So if you take District 1C, which is actually PID 7, what that entails is a golf course, and now they're coming in and they have additional housing development there. So the Service and Assessment Plan identifies all the improvements that are necessary and their costs, the indebtedness that's going to be incurred, the manner of assessing the property, and then includes the role that identifies the assessments on each parcel. So tonight, you're holding a public hearing on that Service and Assessment Plan for those new districts, and that has to be done before any debt can be sold. You also have, and we talked about it at the last meeting, a little bit of an oddity with PID 4, which is District 1F. You actually went through all these steps with that district a number of years ago, but during the development, some of the parcel sizes changed, thus changing the assessments. So the Attorney General's Office said for those parcels that are still outstanding, that haven't been sold, you need to go through another public hearing. So that's why PID 4 is back on your agenda. Also, something that's changed over time, you used to see just one bond sale per PID. The Attorney General ruled you have to split it into utility bonds and road bonds. So that's why your agenda looks so voluminous with these bonds. You've got, every district now has two sales, a road sale and a utility sale. So, just to put it into perspective, what are you doing tonight? You're conducting public hearings on PID 4, which is the oddity I just described, PID 5 and PID 7. PID 5 is District 1G, PID 7 is District 1C. You're approving the service and assessment plans on PID 4, 5, and 7, and then you're turning around and authorizing the sale of the bonds for PID 4. And with PID 4, that basically is all the debt that is authorized for that district for 1F. And then you're approving the roads and utility bonds for both PID 5 and PID 7. And so if you look at the information, I've actually linked that to the items on your agenda. So that's an overview of most of the agenda for tonight. You also have, before you, the items at a glance, and again, it's nicely color-coded for you. And it's, you have PID 4, and it talks about which agenda item. So that's Agenda Item 3 with PID 4. So you have the public hearing on your Service and Assessment Plan. Item 11 is the ordinance where you're approving the Service and Assessment Plan. And then 18, Item 18, you're actually approving the bond ordinance for the sale of $3.68 million worth of utility bonds. PIDs, District 1G, PID 5. Item 4 on your agenda is the public hearing on the Service and Assessment Plan. Then an ordinance is Item 12 where you're approving the Service and Assessment Plan. 14 and 15, you're approving the sale of the debt. PID 7, Item 5 on your agenda is the public hearing on your Service and Assessment Plan. You're approving the Service and Assessment Plan on Item 13. And then 16 and 17, you're actually authorizing the debt. This has been a long time coming, and there's been a lot of work that's been done on this. So I just, again, there was so much, I wanted to step back and give you an overview and the big picture, how that all comes together.
Can you, by authorizing the sale of the debt, talk about the risk that it puts Louisville?
It really actually doesn't put Louisville at any risk, because the way the Castle Hill bond sales are designed, it's actually the tax, the unlimited tax rate, property tax rate of the district that pays the debt. So no Louisville property tax is used to pay this debt. So it does not, it has minimal risk for the city of Louisville.
If you don't mind, when we get out to the meeting, I'm going to ask you that same question.
Sure, absolutely. So that's basically your overview.
Any other questions? We'll move on to discussion of the regular agenda and consent agenda. Canvas of the election returns. Rudy, I've got you handing that. We have our proclamation. We have teen court certificates of appreciation, so looking forward to that. The Marie Strickland Award, anybody's on that? And then we have our public hearing for zone changes.
This is the Old Town Louisville Shopping Center, the Goosebumps property, changing zoning. Long time coming on this. Just described.
Consent agenda. Item 7.
Item 7 is your mid-year report. The good news about your mid-year report are revenues are up and everything looks very, very good. There are a couple of items that I would point out to you. One would be that the fire station number two remodel project, there is a supplemental included in this mid-year report. It was budgeted in this fiscal year at $244,000 and came in considerably higher. That really was due to the fact that an architect was brought in. It wasn't originally planned. There's some changes to the state law that drove that. But when an architect came in, basically a lot of ADA requirements, you would think might not apply to the fire station, but they do. And so this is, project is now going to be around $500,000. It could come in a lot lower when we bid it, but the architect's estimate is considerably higher. So that supplemental is included in your mid-year report.
And on that, we determined as far as the increase in sales tax, how much of that is attributed to what we had discussed prior with the restructuring of the alcohol sales tax?
I don't have that number. Gina, do you have any feel for that at all?
No, we're trying to isolate that, but it's really difficult. We don't have a good method for identifying just that tax as part of the sales tax, so kind of attributing it all at once. So we're trying to get that right down, but we don't have it yet.
Because it would be interesting to see. Obviously, we're getting more sales tax dollars than we originally thought, so we don't really know how good our retail sales tax is actually doing.
It's a difficult number to get to just because of the way Compteur's Office releases the data. It can only drill down to a certain size business. So, and then when you start looking at those companies that sell alcohol, they tend to be in that smaller category. And that really is really difficult for us to get to the numbers. But we will still continue to look for ways to do that. Another significant change here really came from our audit this year. We have always, those funds like the 4B Fund and the TIP Fund where we've sold debt against those revenues, they want to actually budget it over in the Debt Service Fund. So it's, there's no change in our impact on the debt rate or to that fund, other than it's going to, all those revenues will come in from 1B and the TIP Fund and go to the Debt Service Fund as well as those payments. It's an audit requirement. So I would tell you that those are some of the major changes, but in general, at mid-year, it looks very, very positive.
This is that same conversation we had last year, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Regular hearings. Item 9. Item 10. Item 12. Item 13. Item 14. Item 15. Item 16. Donna, there are a ton of these, aren't there?
Yes, sir.
Item 17. Item 18. Into reports and closed session, anything on those? Nothing to take out of the consent agenda? And barring any other comments, all the work session adjourned. Well, at least by my clock, it's 7 o'clock. Looks like we have a quorum, so we'll call this meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. Item A, invocation by myself, so if y'all would please join me in a moment of silence. I'm in. Councilman Durham, would you lead us to flags?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right.
I've been trying not to open the drawer.
Next on the agenda, we have consideration of items relating to the May 10, 2014 City of Louisville general election. We need to canvass the election results, so if our City Secretary, bail me out on that one.
In Councilman Place Number 1, is that on?
Now, can you hear me?
There you go.
My speaker's on. In Councilman Place Number 1, Mary Ellen Mixka received 463 votes. Leroy Vaughn received 648 votes. In Councilman Place Number 3, TJ Gilmore received 991 votes. We had a total of 1,205 voters.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for consideration.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Tierney, seconded by Councilman Durham.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and next, we have presentation of, no, I've got to consider a resolution, don't I? It's two steps here, isn't it, Jill?
No, I need to...
Okay, so then we just need to vote? So I need a motion to consideration the resolution declaring the results of the council election.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion by Councilman Ferguson, seconded by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up, we have presentation of certificates of election and oath of office. Councilman Durham? And I guess that would be me.
Should be the election. This is TJ Gilmore, general election, held for the city of Louisville, Texas. On the 10th day of May 2014, by virtue of having received a majority of the votes cast, has been elected Councilman Place Number 3 of the city of Louisville, Texas, and was on the 19th day of May 2014 certified by a canvas of the vote by the City Council of the city of Louisville, Texas. Now, therefore, by reasons of provisions of the city charter and ordinance of the city of Louisville, Texas, you are hereby notified to qualify as the law directs for the set office of Councilman Place Number 3 of the city of Louisville, and therefore to enter upon the discharge of your duties in accordance with laws in such cases made and provided. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm going to swear in. All right.
Mr. Reddham, repeat after me. I'm TJ Gilmore. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Place Number 3 on the City Council of the city of Louisville, the state of Texas, and works the best of my ability, reserve protecting the fins of the Constitution and laws of the United States, and of this state, and the charter, and ordinances of this city. And I furthermore, solemnly swear that I have not, directly or indirectly, paid, offered, or promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute, any money, reliable things, or promises, or employment, as a source for the giving, or the collecting, at the election, at which I was elected, so help me God.
It's got to go back down, isn't it?
And of course, we'll be swearing in Councilman Vaughn at a later date. So with that, we are in for our proclamation, which of course, those are all right back down there, so I will go back down for our proclamation for this week. That worked out. I could have Jordan McCary and S.P. James. Have both of you up here, please. These are two folks representing our public services, and we have a wonderful proclamation. Have you two join me right over here. That way Tim can get your beautiful faces. So, this proclamation is, whereas water is a basic and essential need to all humankind and all living things to sustain life, and whereas water is a limited resource that should be used wisely and the water supply protected by preventing pollution and conserving water, and whereas public works and utilities provide essential services needed for the protection of health and welfare of our community as part of their everyday lives, and whereas the support of a satisfied and informed citizenry is vital to the professional operation of the public works, utility system, and essential programs such as water production and distribution, wastewater treatment and collection, environmental services, streets and storm drainage, traffic and fleet operations, and public buildings and facilities, and whereas the quality and capability of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public services employees, whereas the efficiency of the qualified and committed personnel who staff the public services department is significantly influenced by citizen attitudes and appreciation of the important work they perform, and now therefore I, TJ Gilmore, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4 through 10, 2014, as National Drinking Water Week, and May 18 through the 24th, 2014, as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens and civic organizations to understand and recognize the contributions of the public services department in providing for our daily utility needs and protecting the health, safety, and well-being of our community. Thank you guys so much for all the hard work that you put into our wonderful facilities. Let's give them a hand. Okay, anything you can say? Your words, absolutely.
We would just like to thank half the public services, the council, and all of our community for supporting us in everything that we do.
Yes, Honorable Pro Tem Mayor Mr. Gilmore, and all the council members, and all the department directors, and especially my director, Mrs. Bassinger, and all these city employees, fellow city employees, and all the great citizens of Louisville, because I live in Louisville too. And it is a pleasure and privilege to stand here and say that we are working for you and thank you for your support. And also, I extend my invitation to visit our water plant where we clean and save and portable water to the great citizens of Louisville. And we will be ready to show you how we clean the water, how we treat the water, and thank you for your patience and have a good day.
It's amazing what you guys do.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Next up, I have the teen court volunteer recognition. So every year, and Judge, if I misspeak, you let me know. All right. Here we go. We have our graduating teen court volunteers this year, and every year we have our teen courts, and it's an outstanding program. It reaches out throughout not just Louisville, but through the neighboring cities as well. And I've seen nothing but great things come out of the program. The judge can speak to it much better than I can. This year, we would like to honor the 2014 graduating teen court volunteers with certificates of appreciation, and these are young people who have given their time, talents, and energy to serve as attorneys, jurors, bailiffs, and judges for the Louisville Flower Mound Teen Court. We appreciate their hard work and dedication to the city, and we would like to recognize the following individuals for their outstanding participation in the teen court program. And if you are here, please come up when I call your name. Lakshmi Menon, she's at an estate competition unable to be with us tonight, but is represented by her parents and sister. Please, come on up. Let's give them a hand. We have Jordan Parczewski. Thank you for being here. Welcome, Jordan. We have Paviki Salmy. Congratulations. Thank you for all of your hard work. If you would, be sure that she gets a hug. There's Jordan's. Oh, there they are. There we go, there's one. Smile. Got a guy with a camera over there? No, I'll be back there. One, two, three. Outstanding. Let's give all these young people... Here's your chance to shine. Welcome back to their seats. Well done. Next up, we have our adult teen court volunteers. We'd like to honor an outstanding adult volunteer who has donated her time and expertise to help the teen court program run smoothly. She's assisted with the teen court night sign-in process at nearly every teen court night in Louisville, and is the bailiff on teen court nights in Flower Mound. We appreciate her hard work and dedication to the teen court program, and we would like to recognize Judy Broderick, who is unable to be with us tonight. Let's give Judy a hand. Now, the teen court, actually, we have scholarships. Each year, the city of Louisville honors a teen court volunteer who exemplifies not only outstanding academic achievements, but also a willingness to serve his or her community through dedicated community involvement. And tonight, we are fortunate to be able to present two awards. First, we would like to recognize the 2014 recipient of the Louisville Flower Mound Teen Court Scholarship. This $1,000... This $1,000 scholarship is awarded to Lakshmi Menon. Get to come on back. Lakshmi is another outstanding student in the community who resides in Flower Mount and attends Flower Mount High School. She has served as a volunteer for our program since 2009, having served in all roles: juror, bailiff, prosecuting and defense attorney, and master jury judge. Lakshmi has demonstrated a strong commitment and responsibility to the Teen Court Program, and credits the program for teaching her to perform as a leader and helping her feel like she's impacted the lives of others. Lakshmi plans on attending University of Texas at Dallas for her undergraduate studies and going on to the University of Texas Southwestern University Medical School to study pediatric medicine. Congratulations. Let's give them all a hand. And we are proud to be able to present a second scholarship this year, the Ronald and Marilyn Niemann Scholarship, honoring another Teen Court volunteer who exemplifies outstanding academic achievements and a willingness to serve his or her community through dedicated community involvement. Mr. Niemann is a retired city attorney for the City of Louisville, and with his wife established this fund upon his retirement. The $1,000 scholarship is awarded to Jordan Parczewski. Jordan is an outstanding student in the community who resides in Louisville and attends Louisville High School. She has served as a volunteer for our program since 2009, participating in all roles: juror, bailiff, prosecuting, defense attorney, and master jury judge. What was your favorite?
Master jury judge.
Okay. Jordan has demonstrated excellent leadership skills by mentoring others who are new to the Teen Court Program. She credits the program for helping her to become more polite, respectful, and professional, and says it has taught her the importance of volunteering. Jordan plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University in Commerce in the fall. Her aspirations are to become a high school English teacher, impacting her future students by sharing her love of English. We are proud to be able to present these scholarship awards to two of our outstanding volunteers, thank them, and wish all of our graduating seniors all the best of luck in their future plans. Next up, we have the Maurice Strickland City Managers Award for 2013-2014. And to give you all a little bit of history, Maurice Strickland was hired by the City of Louisville in 1986 and retired in 2011 as operations supervisor over utility line maintenance. His tenure with the city was exemplified by quality service and a customer-first attitude that set the finest examples for his peers and employees. Shortly after his retirement, Maurice succumbed in his battle with cancer. As a tribute to his service and a reminder of the high standards he set for the organization, the City Managers Award, given to exemplary employees, was renamed in his honor in 2012. Employees that received the Maurice Strickland Award are honored in recognition of performance of an exemptional nature and actions that support the city's vision and values. Their work on behalf of Louisville residents has upheld the tradition of customer satisfaction that best describes Maurice's dedicated service to this community. The individual selection for this year's Maurice Strickland Award has exhibited the values of team play, good communication, positive attitude, innovation, and integrity. This person has worked tirelessly to refine and improve processes by taking numerous manual and software systems and moving them to an integrated, useful, functional platform. Her work will benefit all city departments for years to come. Throughout the process, no matter how rough the work or day, this person has always had a smile and a positive attitude. This person is truly a diamond in our organization. I am privileged and honored to present this year's Maurice Strickland Award to administrative analyst Laura Fisher.
I just, I'm not only an employee here at the city, but I'm also a very proud resident of Louisville. I really enjoy living here, but I really, really enjoy working here as well. This staff is absolutely amazing, and I hope that all the citizens understand everything that goes into keeping this city running. I love my job, and I'm so very honored to be receiving this tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Julie, I don't have anything more up here, right? Okay, I got that. All right. Public hearing number one, consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from Light Industrial to Old Town Mixed Use II on 0.1151 acres located at 305 East Walters Street, further identified as Keely Edition Lot 12, South 95.49 Feet, Block 9, as requested by Mark Tuckey, the property owner, case number PZ 2014-0504. The property is located at 305 East Walters Street and has a single-family home on the lot. Mr. Tuckey plans to continue using the property as a residence and has applied for Old Town Mixed Use II zoning to comply with the Old Town Master Plan and allow for future redevelopment opportunities. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by a vote of seven to zero at their May 6, 2014, meeting. I will entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson and a second by Councilman, I'm drawing a blank, Durham. There we go. Nothing but fun. It's first and a second. City Attorney, you get to read the ordinance?
We're actually voting on to close.
Oh, well, one there. Move to close the public hearing. So, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll get this up before I'm getting done here today. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Move to... Any action for the public for the ordinance?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the ordinance? There we go.
Move to approve.
You've got to read it first, right? She's got to read it first to you.
After.
You have to move it in a second, then she reads it, then we vote. That I got.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ferguson with a move to approve, and Tierney with a second.
All right, there we go. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas by rezoning the 0.1151 acre tract of land located in Lot 12, South 95.49 Feet, Block 9 of the Keely Edition from Light Industrial District zoning to Old Town Mixed Use II District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demands the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public hearing, which is consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from General Business to Old Town Mixed Use II on 4.089 acres located at 201 South Mill Street, Old Town Louisville Shopping Center, further identified as LSC Edition Lot 1, Block A, as requested by CADG Mill Street LLC, the property owner, case number PZ 2014-0505. The property is located at 201 South Mill Street and has three primary vacant multi-tenant structures on the lot. The applicant is currently planning for redevelopment and has applied for Old Town Mixed Use II zoning to allow for a variety of redevelopment options. OTMU II is the recommended zoning for the property as shown in the Old Town Master Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by a vote of seven to zero at their May 6, 2014, meeting. We have Drew Keith available from Castle Hills and Bright Realty to answer any questions. Otherwise, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Move to close the public hearing? Was that a second, Rudy?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a first by Councilman Tierney and a second by Councilman Durham. Now, I need a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have to take the vote.
Oh, I skipped my vote. Yes, there we go. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now, a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Tierney, seconded by Councilman Durham.
Okay. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, to rezone a 4.089 acre tract of land located in Lot 1, Block A of the LSC Edition from General Business District zoning to Old Town Mixed Use II District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item three, public hearing, consideration of the amended and supplemented service and assessment plan and assessment role for Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Four. And this is actually, Mr. Keith is available from Bright Realty for this one. At the May 5, 2014, meeting, City Council called for a public hearing to consider the amended and supplemented service and assessment plan and assessment role, which have been created to identify public improvements to be provided by the PID, along with related information concerning the cost and indebtedness to be incurred. Over the years, as a part of the development process, lots were subdivided into different sizes that had originally been anticipated in the original service and assessment plan, thus creating the need for a new hearing on this amended and supplemented plan. Need a motion to close the public hearing? If there's no comment?
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And motion passes. Close the public hearing. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Just to approve. Okay. Yeah, there's no lawyer on this one. Got it. Move to approve. Who's my primary?
I'll move to approve.
Okay. So I got to move in a second, Mr. Attorney? Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item four, continued public hearing, consideration of the service and assessment plan and assessment role for Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District PID Number Five. At the March 3, 2014, meeting, City Council called for a public hearing to consider the service and assessment plan and assessment role, which have been created to identify public improvements to be provided by the PID, along with related information concerning the cost and indebtedness to be incurred. Move to close the public hearing? I'll accept that.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Councilman Durham, seconded by Councilman Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. That was easy. I got it now. Number five, continue the public hearing.
To approve.
Oh, we got... Wait a minute. I missed that.
So you just moved to close the public hearing, and now you're moving to approve.
Now we're going to move to approve. Okay. Move to approve. Consideration?
Move to approve.
I've got a motion. I need a second.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilman Ferguson, second by Councilman Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item five, continued public hearing, consideration of the service and assessment plan and assessment role for Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Seven. At the March 3, 2014, meeting, City Council called for a public hearing to consider the service and assessment plan and assessment role, which have been created to identify public improvements to be provided by the PID, along with related information concerning the cost and indebtedness to be incurred. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Councilman Tierney, seconded by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ferguson, second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Got through all of those. Thank you for paying attention. Next up, Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on those items at this meeting. I think I've got two for the visitors forum, and first, I have Tracy Forsha. And just a reminder, everyone, the way these citizen forums function is that we cannot take any action on what has happened, but we can absolutely put you in contact with city staff to continue the conversation, but we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Thank you. I have handouts. May I approach?
Absolutely. I can take care of it. Thank you. If you would, please lead with your name and address for the record.
Okay. Tracy Forsha, 1364 Mimosa Lane. Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. I presented to you a letter regarding the concerns of my neighborhood. The design in our neighborhood does not allow us to comply with City Ordinance 2273-11-97, Section 15-127.5, which is parking within 10 feet of a mailbox. I've also spoken with many of my neighbors and have included a list of their signatures which shows that they are also concerned about being in violation of this ordinance. Many of us have multiple vehicles at our houses. Many of the curb measurements at our neighborhood vary between six feet and 25 feet, which forces us to be in violation of this ordinance, particularly on Saturdays. I'm requesting that this ordinance either be rescinded so that we cannot breach it and be subject to a $200 fine, or be revised to match the federal standard, which states customers are required, as a condition of delivery, to ensure that proper access is provided to mail receptacles. You can see how unfair it is that this ordinance cannot be enforced equally among all citizens in Louisville. None of us wants to have a $200, $200 fine just because of how our neighborhood is designed. I've also spoken with Lisa Tao, the postal supervisor, and Captain Powell of the Louisville Police Department to observe our neighborhood. Both of them drove through our neighborhood, observed it, and they were both in agreement that our neighborhood cannot adhere to this ordinance. I'm sure that I speak not only for my neighborhood, but also for several neighborhoods around Louisville, and I believe that it is right as the City Council that this ordinance be rescinded or revised, since it cannot be enforced equally among all the citizens. I hope you will consider my request, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll have someone reach out to you in the neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have John Krasnan. I hope I got that name mostly right.
Wilson.
Fair enough. And if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Krasnan, 1904 Aspen Drive in Louisville. This is my first time here, so I'm kind of understanding.
It's my first time here. We're good.
Yeah, I see that. Well done. I was calling in regards, and asking in regards. In the past 35 days, I have contacted the Louisville Police Department over, ten times. I have had three officers come out there, one only, which is a traffic officer. I have contacted both of those, non-traffic officers, patrol officers, and spoke with them in regards to this. But there is a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign down my street, and I understand that I might be at the very end of the City of Louisville, but that doesn't, that doesn't end from the safety of the children who are there. There is over 10 children in the small area of Aspen Drive. It is a, it is a straight shot through to Highland Village, so most of the people that even drive down that street aren't even Louisville residents. I have requested, I believe, I spoke with the facilities manager about, about speed bumps down the City of Louisville, and I was informed that no city, no city street has speed bumps, so that's apparently not an option for that. There is one sign that on each, on each of the street, one is about four feet from the corner of Brazos and Aspen, and that's at the very end, and you don't even see it when you're current coming down the, as you turn in on Aspen, and the other one's straight directly across from my house, Two Houses down from 407. And the people are coming over 25, coming through that way. Both police officers that I talked to that are Traffic Division, that are, that were Patrol Division, stated that, as I spoke with them, that they knew that... that they knew that they were going over 25 miles an hour, and they had hoped that just with the car presence there, that that would be able to slow them down. And they actually knew that. I had attempted to speak to Officer Barron, Sergeant Barron, excuse me. Last week, was not able to get in touch with him. I had contacted him by phone on two other occasions, and did not receive anything back from him as well. I don't know what, I don't know what it's gonna take. I sure hope it's not one of my children that get run over by this, this spot. And I sure hope it's not, you know? And I pray for any kid that's, that's gonna be down that way. But I just, I just want to speak on, you know, on my displeasure with what has been done. As far as that goes. And, you know, whatever, whatever can be done, whatever needs to be done or that, I'd appreciate feedback, or anything in that matter.
Absolutely. Assistant Chief Taylor, I'm sure, will be able to reach out to you and get, get some information, so we can, we can address that. So appreciate, appreciate the concern in bringing it to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
That concludes the Visitor Citizen Forum. That's all the comments that I had available. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I have not received any such submittals. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Tierney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 7, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2013-2014 Midyear Report and Approval of Supplemental Appropriations to the General Fund in the Amount of $256,000, Debt Service Fund in the Amount of $1,933,331, the Communities Activities Fund in the Amount of $85,000, and the PEG or PEG Fund in the Amount of $24,926. At the completion of the first six months of the fiscal year, staff conducts a review and provides a report on the financial status of all funds in relation to the authorized budget. General Fund revenues are projected to end the 2013-14 fiscal year 3.8% above the budget in large due to an increase in projected sales tax revenues. The same increase in sales tax performance is seen in the 4B Sales Tax, Crime Control, and Fire Services District Fund. Oh, I'm on consent. I don't have to go that way. Yeah, nice. So 6, 7, I keep going. Thanks for saving me there. So we can move second? Now I am. Off to item 9. Apologies. I'll get this someday. 9, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 16 Utilities, Section 16252 and 16258 of the Lewisville City Code by Clarifying the Allowable Times for Watering and the Variance Process. Just a quick note, council, we have to all vote yes, or we will have to read these particular ones three times per law. So with this particular hearing, changes to the Water Conservation and Emergency Water Management Plan were approved at the April 7, 2014 City Council meeting, and became effective May 1, 2014. Upon implementation, staff recognized clarification was needed regarding outdoor watering times and the variance process. These revisions do not impact the implementation or enforcement of the ordinance. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I've got a question on this. Could we have staff just, just say what the changes were?
It's really merely a clarification of what was already passed. During this stage, our residents are allowed to water twice a week on designated days. Those days have not changed based on, on this revised ordinance. But we did clarify the times, and so the allowable times people can water on their designated days starts at midnight and runs till 10:00 a.m., then starts again at 6:00 p.m. and runs till midnight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Manager, would you also comment on hand watering?
Yes, sir. Hand watering during this stage is allowable on all days.
And all times?
And all times. Thank you, sir.
Have we talked about doing any signage for folks that are on wells, or recommending that at some point?
We have not. We can certainly discuss that.
All right, I'll entertain them.
Where have Carol? Do you have a correction?
No, we have, when everyone, anyone has called us, we say if you have a well, if you want to put a sign up, then that is very helpful. But we're not providing those signs at this point, but people can feel free to put that up if they have a well.
Great. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilman Ferguson. What am I doing?
Ah, you're right. I'll second his motion.
All right, so, motion by Tierney, a second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor? Oh, need the Attorney to read this one.
This is the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter 16 Utilities, Section 16252 and 16258 of the Lewisville City Code by clarifying the allowable times for watering and the variance process, providing a penalty clause, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10, Consideration of a Preliminary Platt of Castle Hills Tract K Addition and 83.415 acre parcel designated general business 2, located on the southwest corner of Sam Rayburn Tollway and FM 544 with 3 associated variances as requested by Land Design Incorporated, representing the property owner. The subject plat is located within Castle Hills in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, ETJ, and is to be developed in accordance with the 1996 Bright Farms Agreement. The subject property is being platted for future office development. The following variances are being requested: A, to allow dedication of a street drainage pedestrian easement in lieu of right-of-way dedication for right-turn lanes along Sam Rayburn Tollway and FM 544; B, to allow an alternate 80-foot right-of-way street section; and C, to allow a reduced median opening space on FM 544 between Sam Rayburn Tollway and Midway Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat and variances 7 to 0 at its May 6, 2014 meeting. I will entertain a motion. By the way, Brian Dench here is here to speak if we have any questions regarding this.
Move to approve the preliminary plat and the variances described in the caption.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Durham, seconded by Councilman Tierney. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, Consideration of an Ordinance Approving the Amended and Supplemented Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 4. City Council approved a resolution on April 2, 2007, authorizing the creation of Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District PID Number 4. On May 21, 2007, a service and assessment plan and assessment role was adopted. Over the years, as a part of the development process, lots were subdivided into different sizes that had originally been anticipated in the original service and assessment plan. A new notice and public hearing process was required, and the hearing held earlier this evening. Based on information provided at the public hearing, the City Council must now consider adoption of the amended and supplemented plan. This plan identifies public improvement costs to be provided by the PID, along with related information concerning the indebtedness to be incurred and the assessment role. Any comments? I'll consider a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Tierney. City Attorney?
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Lewisville, accepting and approving an amended and supplemented service and assessment plan and assessment role for authorized improvements for the Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 4, making a finding of a special benefit to certain property in extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, levying special assessments against certain properties within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, and establishing a lien on such property, providing for payment of the assessment in accordance with Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing for a method of assessment and the payment of the assessments, providing penalties and interests on delinquent assessments, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Consideration of an Ordinance Approving the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 5. City Council approved a resolution on May 6, 2013, authorizing the creation of Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District PID Number 5. The City Council conducted a public hearing to hear comments on the service and assessment plan and role earlier during today's meeting. Based on information provided at the public hearing, the City Council must now consider adoption of the plan. The plan identifies public improvement costs to be provided by the PID, along with related information concerning the indebtedness to be incurred and the assessment role. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Approval, motion to approve by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Durham. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City of Lewisville, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan and assessment role for authorized improvements for the Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 5, making a finding of special benefits to certain property in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, levying special assessments against certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, and establishing a lien on such property, providing for payment of the assessment in accordance with Chapters 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing for the method of assessment and the payment of the assessments, providing penalties and interests on delinquent assessments, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, Consideration of an Ordinance Approving the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 7. City Council approved a resolution on May 6, 2013, authorizing the creation of Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 7. The City Council conducted a public hearing to hear comments on the service and assessment plan and role earlier during today's meeting. Based on information provided at the public hearing, the City Council must now consider adoption of the plan. This plan identifies public improvement costs to be provided by the PID, along with related information concerning the indebtedness to be incurred and the assessment role. Mr. Ross Martin is also here to discuss or answer any questions regarding the PIDs. So, Mr. Keith, Mr. Dench, and all, thank you so much for being here to answer questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Durham, seconded by Councilman Tierney. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City of Lewisville, accepting and approving a service and assessment plan and assessment role for authorized improvements for the Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 7, making a finding of special benefits to certain property in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, levying special assessments against certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, and establishing a lien on such property, providing for payment of the assessments in accordance with Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing for a method of assessment and the payments of the assessment, providing penalties and interests on delinquent assessments, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 14, sensing a pattern here, folks?
We need four more.
Consideration of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $4,495,000, City of Lewisville, Texas, Combined Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Road System Bonds, Series 2014, Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 5 Project. The Series 2014 road bonds. In accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limiting offering, limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 road bonds, approving a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 road bonds. Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1G has requested the city to authorize and approve the issuance of up to $4,495,000 of said bonds above for the purpose of acquiring and constructing certain streets and roads, and to pay certain costs incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds. I'll entertain a motion.
Councilman Gilmore, if I can, we have, we're approving a lot of millions and millions of dollars worth of bond sales here, and if the city manager can just kind of go over and explain exactly what risk the city of Lewisville is at by issuing all of this debt.
Yes, sir. The public improvement districts that are being discussed on tonight's agenda all lay in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction outside of the city limits. Those, those public improvement districts, actually their boundaries match the water district boundaries, and they serve as a financing method for infrastructure within those water districts. The city of Lewisville in no way is responsible for the payment of the debt. The debt is actually paid for through the tax rate at each one of the water districts. Thus, there is no liability for the city of Lewisville.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Tierney, seconded by Councilman Ferguson.
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $4,495,000, City of Lewisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Road System Bonds, Series 2014, Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 5 Project. The Series 2014 road bonds. In accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 road bonds, approving a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 road bond, bonds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 15, Consideration of an Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of $3,225,000, City of Lewisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Utility Systems Bonds, Series 2014, Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 5 Project. The Series 2014 utility bonds. In accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 utility bonds, approving a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters relating to the Series 2014 utility bonds. Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1G has requested the city to authorize and approve the issuance of up to $3,255,000 of said bonds above for the purpose of acquiring certain water, sewer, and drainage facilities, and to pay certain costs incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Councilman Tierney.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ferguson.
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $3,255,000, City of Lewisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessments Utility System Bonds, Series 2014, Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 5 Project. The Series 2014 utility bonds. In accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 utility bonds, approving a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 utility bonds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, Consideration of an Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of $1,405,000, City of Lewisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessment Road System Bonds, Series 2014, Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 7 Project. The Series 2014 road bonds. In accordance with the terms of the, of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 road bonds, approving a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 road bonds. Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1C has requested the city to authorize and approve the issuance of up to $1,405,000 of said bonds above for the purpose of acquiring and constructing certain streets and roads, and to pay for certain costs incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ferguson, seconded by Councilman Durham.
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $1,405,000, City of Lewisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Special Assessments Road System Bonds, Series 2014, Lewisville Castle Hills Public Hill, Public Hill, Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 7 Project. The Series 2014 road bonds. In accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 road bonds, approving a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 road bonds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17, Consideration of an Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of $1,360,000, City of Lewisville, Texas, Combination Contract Revenue and Speciality Assessment Utility System Bonds, Series 2014, Lewisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number 7 Project. The Series 2014 utility bonds. In accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 utility bonds, approving a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 utility bonds. Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1C has requested the city to authorize and approve the issuance of up to $1,360,000 of said and approve the issuance of up to $1,360,000 of said bonds above for the purpose of acquiring certain water, sewer, and drainage facilities, and to pay certain costs incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Tierney, seconded by Councilman Ferguson.
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $1,360,000, City of Louisville, Texas, combination contract revenue and special assessments utility system bonds, Series 2014, Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Seven Project, the Series 2014 utility bonds, in accordance with the terms of that certain master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the master trust agreement and first supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final limited offering memorandum pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 utility bonds, approving a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 utility bonds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, consideration of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $3,680,000, City of Louisville, Texas, combination contract revenue and special assessment utility system bonds, Series 2014, Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Four Project, the Series 2014 utility bonds, in accordance with the terms of that certain third supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the third supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final offering statement pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 utility bonds, delegating authority to authorized officials to finalize certain sale terms relating to the Series 2014 utility bonds, and finalize a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 utility bonds. Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number 1F has requested the city to authorize and approve the issuance of up to $3,680,000 of said bonds above for the purpose of acquiring certain water, sewer, and drainage facilities, to fund a debt service reserve fund for the bonds, and to pay certain costs incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Ferguson, seconded by Councilman Durham.
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $3,680,000, City of Louisville, Texas, combination contract revenue and special assessment utility system bonds, Series 2014, Louisville Castle Hills Public Improvement District Number Four Project, the Series 2014 utility bonds, in accordance with the terms of that certain third supplemental trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of the third supplemental trust agreement, authorizing a final offering statement pertaining to the issuance of the Series 2014 utility bonds, delegating authority to authorized officials to finalize certain sales terms relating to the Series 2014 utility bonds, and finalize a bond purchase agreement, providing an effective date, and containing other matters related to the Series 2014 utility bonds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, folks, for holding on through all of that. Now, let's go ahead and move into reports, reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. However, we're going to start here at the front. And Nika? Nothing. Mr. Monahan?
No.
Chief Tittle?
No.
Ms. Goller?
Assistant City Chief, right?
There we go. Mr. Taylor? Nothing? You're not going to bail me out here? Ms. Bassinger? How's the lake doing?
We still don't have enough rain to put any water in the lake. The grass is green, but there's still no change in the lake.
Now, tell them to quit leveling all the other lakes out with ours.
Excuse me?
Tell them to quit leveling all the other lakes out with ours.
That's truly what is happening.
Thank you.
Dallas got a bunch off of Texoma, I think, didn't they?
Yeah.
Got a bunch of fill off that.
Ms. Thompson?
They should be happy. Leave Louisville alone.
They should. Yeah, it's our lake, right? No. Technically, no.
It's the river flow.
Ms. Thompson? Mr. Howard? Mr. Joyner? Mr. Bacchus?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilman?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Tierney?
I just want to commend you, Councilman Gilmore, on a fine, fine job.
That was a lot of reading.
It was. That's a tough agenda to be thrown in at the last minute. And if I were thinking a little bit clearer, I should have lined this up with Ferguson and Durham, like, on that last agenda item, none of us make a move to do anything just to see your reaction.
That would have been great. That would have been perfect.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
For those of you who maybe were out and about this past weekend, I think every event ever happened in Louisville. I really want to thank all of the volunteers, all of the city staff, and all of the residents who came out and visited both Paws in the Park. We had our lovely Chalk This Way, which gets bigger every year. Can't wait for the plaza to be open for that next year. We had a couple of local businesses as well. We had an auto, antique auto show down on Main Street. That was a lot of fun. There were some great cars. And then, of course, Bahama Bucks had a sand sculptor come in. She'd been on national television, and she had built a wonderful sand sculpture down there by Bahama Bucks. It's still there. Go down and check it out. But it's a fabulous weekend, and it's just, it's a great place to live, work, and play here. So, thank you, guys, for all the work. Councilman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Protem. First of all, Chalk This Way, this is something that, as the city manager knows, I have worked on for over a year, trying to wrangle out from under the city of the colony, convinced that we could do a much better job with it and provide a much more expansive experience, something people really enjoy, and both last year and this year have proven to be a success. So, somewhere in the future, we're looking at going to two days. It just continues to grow. Attendance was really good. Lot of great artwork out there. It was a lot of fun. Somebody got a day off from work, too. So, that was a good deal for their drawing that was on city staff. So, look for Chalk This Way next year around this time, and hopefully we'll get the same wonderful weather. Went out to Paws in the Park also with the city manager, and a lot of people there, a lot of pets getting adopted. It was really, really, really a good event. So, hats off to all the folks in animal services for their job that they did, and to all the folks that came out. Got some things at the MCL Grand, a stage show, an evening with Melva Toast, spelled M-E-L-V-A-T-O-S-T-E, a one-woman show. That's June 5 through 7, four shows presented by Our Productions Theater Company. Have a booking in the theater by Joseph Hall's Elvis, who has performed in Branson, Missouri. That'll be on June 13. Concerts coming up this Saturday, Kelly Willis and Bruce Robison, May 24, in the Texas Tune Series. This is the first Texas Tune Series that I will have to miss this year, so you'll have to find somebody else for an emcee. Public events, we've got the Women Leading Business Event on June 13. That's presented by the Louisville Area Chamber of Commerce. And then, we'll start cranking up the Sounds of Louisville series, concert series, on Tuesday evenings in June and July, and that'll be still in the courtyard. We won't have the park ready, so we'll do it again in the courtyard one more time. And Visual Arts League always has that Friday night jam that I keep telling you ought to go to, and it's quite something. A lot of people that come for that. It's amazingly entertaining. We have the winner of the Fresh Ideas Art Exhibit, Irma Murray, but also featuring photographs by the Visual Arts League. That'll be in the gallery through, from June 7 through July 19. And Stars and Stripes exhibit in the North Corridor Gallery by the Visual Arts League, June 14 through July 19. The gallery is open Tuesdays through Saturdays, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., and always open during public performances, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything from the city attorney's office?
No, sir.
City Secretary?
I just remind everybody that... Now, I'm not on, right? Early voting for the primary runoff is going on right now, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and you can vote at the annex. It's Monday through Friday this week.
Thank you. Officer, thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it. And with that, we're going to convene into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, Aurelio Duarte Edal versus City of Louisville, Texas, case number 13-40806, United States Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit, Section 551-072, real estate property acquisition, and Section 551.087, economic development, deliberation regarding economic development
Going on Friday night. It's kind of cool.
Reconvene? Is there any action to be taken, counsel? No, sir. Move to adjourn. Adjourn? Yes, sir.
Second.
I almost moved to approve. We had so many of those tonight. We have a move to adjourn by Councilman Tierney, a second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.